Phillips.
Here.
Stricker.
Here.
McCarrigan.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public information, a copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. It's above Tom, Lane, and Carissa. They want me to call them out today. Four, notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made to this agenda less than 24 hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda. Do we have any changes? No changes, Vice Mayor McCarrigan. Five, citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda, as required by state law, no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Do we have any emergency action? Six, closed session, and council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary. If the item is on the agenda, ask for exception eighty-four dash fourteen-ten of the Nebraska revised statutes. Seven, consent calendar, items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests that an item be considered separately. Do we have any questions or comments on the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Stricker, second by Phillips. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Solomon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Eight, petitions, petitions and public input. Council to remove from the table to discuss and consider action on a change of location of liquor license for TMA Investments LLC, DBA, GNT Billiards Unlimited from twelve-fourteen Third Avenue to twelve-eleven Third Avenue, Scottsbluff, Nebraska. Do we have a motion to remove the item from the table?
Make a motion to remove it from the table.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Solomon, second by Phillips. Any questions, concerns? Okay, call the roll, please. Phillips.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
Be counsel to discuss and consider action on a change of location of liquor license for TNA Investments LLC, DBA, GNT Billiards Unlimited from twelve-fourteen Third Avenue to twelve-eleven Third Avenue, Scottsbluff, Nebraska. More come forward, please.
A year ago, I never anticipated to be growing and moving this fast. I own the property at twelve-nine, twelve-eleven Third Avenue. The actual parcel address is classified as twelve-five Third Avenue. There was confusion with the state over that, so there's three units there. So, I'm moving into twelve-nine, twelve- actually, I already moved. It's all done and it's there. This is just the last step, getting you guys to approve the address change of the liquor license. State Liquor Inspector's been in there, got his blessings. Fire Marshal, or City Fire Marshal Chris has been in there. He's already given me my occupants' permit, and Zach, and Logan, and Gary Heidel. I brought all the plan in. I already got the occupants' permit for over there also. So, this is just the last step.
It's essentially the same permit we granted before, just different address.
So, is it, is it a bigger facility with the two?
Yeah, it almost doubled the square footage. I went from five pool tables to eight pool tables. I can bring in two more for larger tournaments. Still have space for that. I'm also improving by, I'm starting a retail outlet for selling tables. Tables are actually already in to sell, but I'm gonna have an accessory apparel department also selling queues, clothes of a brand. I want to clarify this, a brand, it's called Predator. Pool queues, tables, and stuff. Is what I say, becoming a Predator dealer, people look at me weird.
So, when you say you have an occupants, you meant permit from Zach and Gary? What does that mean? Is, what was in there previously?
It was an art gallery.
Retail? Or just like a one to go look at stuff?
Go look at stuff. I think he had some retail. He built his own, I mean, he took from Clay Power and built this archery stuff, like pots, things like that.
And do you have to add any exiting or anything like that as part of your?
Yeah, Zach wanted a exterior, another exterior passage door put in, put in those exit lines.
And are, as I asked, parking, now that it's a new location, is there parking that won't cause problems? Look to Zach maybe too.
There shouldn't be any problems.
Okay.
Kevin, do you have anything?
No, I had Zach check on the parking and made sure that Chris had been through town. It sounds like you had to work with him on a few issues to make some improvements.
I got one there right off the bat, because I know I was gonna have to.
And Chief brass has reported that there haven't been incidents at the previous location.
Well, I think it's a good problem for you to have, to grow.
I did really not want to move a year later. And last month, I was like, oh boy, this is the last time I'm doing it. Moving pools, that was as uneasy task.
No. My basic questions are answered.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
So, I'll move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Stricker, second by Solomon. Any other questions or comments?
Thanks.
Call the roll. Stricker.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Thank you, guys, and sorry about two weeks ago. I thought I had a night off and didn't.
Nine, resolution and ordinances. A, council to discuss and consider action on a resolution extending the date for written notice of termination and participation in the League Association of Risk Management, LARM, and consider the contribution credits for multi-year commitments and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Your Honor, council, this is our annual LARM extension. As long as we extend it by three years or enter into a three-year agreement, we get a 5% discount. So, that's the purpose of the ordinance. And as we discussed in the budget workshop, it wasn't as big of an increase as we had anticipated. It was substantial, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Do we ever shop those insurance rates anywhere, just for good practice?
It's been a while. North Platte's doing it right now, so we're keeping an eye on them to see how that works out. They went before the LARM board. Usually when you get the insurance through LARM, you hit the whole package, which is confidence. The LARM board agreed to let them divide the two and possibly go with LARM, but go somewhere else with confidence. But we're watching to see what they're gonna do.
So, was that your way of saying it's all or nothing with LARM?
Generally, it is.
Okay. I don't, I'm misinterpreting. What's their deductible, like a building?
It's different, five thousand for most of them. Is that vehicle's toothpaste, so it's five thousand for everything? And that's probably per event, because it's not per buildings per?
It's per event, yes.
Yeah, so if we have a house or it's five thousand, we'll deduct it for the buildings. It's not per each.
That's a good deal. It's commercial property, so.
Like a camp, this type, yeah, okay.
LARM, LARM has been great to work with. Staff really appreciates them. We can get Tracy in here to talk to you guys. They're always very responsive to us on all of our claims.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So, I'll move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Stricker, second by Solomon. Any other questions or comments? Okay, call the roll, please. McCarrigan.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
Be counsel to discuss and consider action on the amended final plat of lots one and two. Lot one, Panhandle Cooperative Subdivision, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Vice Mayor and council, at the July Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission considered this amended plat to lot one of Panhandle Cooperative Subdivision. It was just one block. The property owner is desiring to split it into two lots. One, which would be the Main Street Market, building, grocery store, and the gas station. And then the other one would be the back of the bank branch. The purpose of it is to, so the bank can take ownership of the land of the bank. Normally, this would be like an administrative replat, since it's just dividing it. Existing lots, and everything's already built, but they dedicated two utilities, so they're twenty-one-one. It has to go through the standard process, but the motions be counsel. Twenty-one-one, twenty-two, it's either one or two. Planning Commission, pause the recommendation.
Vice Mayor, have a question.
You said they're dedicating two utilities.
Access easements, it's either one or two.
Okay. I'm just wanting to make sure.
Yep, access easements. Next one's a utility easement.
Oh, okay.
Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Phillips, second by Solomon. Any questions or comments? Call, please. Phillips.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Counsel to discuss and consider action on the amended final plat of lot three-eight and four-eight. Lot seven, Montauk Estates Subdivision, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
So, this is the replat of Montauk Estates Subdivision. All it is, adjusting property line between lots three and four, and then the existing line and the utility easement on it. So, as they adjusted this one, we required them to adjust the utility easement, vacate the existing one and relocate it. There's no utilities in it, but if future ones needed, it can still be used. The purpose of this replat was just to allow for some more access to the accessory building position shed on the northwest corner, lot four-eight. I believe about lot three-eight will be sold here soon, so they just wanted to make sure they can get it down the shed. Planning Commission made a pause for recommendation on those two.
Can we go to page ninety? Should be color.
That one?
Yes. So, that utility easement that's there, is that the current one, and it'll follow the other one, or is it?
Correct, yeah, the yellow, one is the existing one that we vacated with this plat, and then the red line. There's a new ten-foot utility, it's gonna help out with this.
Okay, just wondering. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
So, I'll move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Stricker, second by Phillips. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Solomon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Be counsel to consider action on the first reading of the ordinance updating utility user fees, including water service fees and solid waste collection.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and council. This is a standard part of our budget process. Every year, we raise utility rates about three percent, three percent exactly. And so, that includes our wholesale that we do to the city, and then care as well too, that's included in this. And then, can you scroll down a couple of pages, link two? Last year, I don't know if you remember, when I got here, we, there was a section, we had to go back in November. If we knew that, it had to do with the rates, it was still, we were with the sanitation rates. A little bit more, maybe, you know, one more page. Is it, is it this one? I don't have to go back to remember, you, we caught it all this time. I have a little counter reminder to make sure I can do that this year. That is page right here. That was still where it was set up on, open on page two, pardon me.
Oh, sorry.
Back up. Right, up, up a little bit more. Now, look out just a little bit. But it was still the, the way this ordinance was written, that has, and we did the five-month building on it still. And this is updated for the monthly billing. Everything is matured in here now, this is, kids have heard of it, so this is just a first reading, so. Any questions or?
Any questions? Head ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff amending and changing Chapter Six, Article Six, for solid waste collection fees at section six dash six dash twenty-three, six dash six dash twenty-four, six dash six dash twenty-seven. Amending and changing sewer user fees, including surcharge for stormwater regulatory requirements at section six dash six dash nineteen, six dash six dash twenty, and six dash six dash twenty-two. Amending and changing the water service fees at section six dash six dash twenty-eight, all in Chapter Six, Article Six of the municipal code, repealing prior provisions of the municipal code, providing for an effective date, and providing for publication in pamphlet form. Ten, newton awards. May council to consider action on a warning bid for the cemetery use cemetery new office building. De Anderson shot in proportion for the amount of three hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Good evening, council. So, this is the bid for the new cemetery office building. It's a twenty-foot thirty building. We received one bid that, or De Anderson shot. It's around three hundred eighty-seven dollars is where it's falling within what the current rates are. What do we plan to do with the old building? Probably use it more as an employee lounge. Apparently, they don't have anything like that. They sit in the garage and the heat and stuff, so they'll mainly utilize that a little bit better. It'll be used for some storage as well. All the records will stay in there, and it's safe as in there.
Did they do maintenance for that, backside?
What was the budget for this?
We had two hundred and fifty thousand. This year's budget, we have four hundred and forty thousand, next year's budget.
Where will the location of the new building be, right next to Dublin?
Yeah, it'll be located, there's a large pine tree right there on the corner in front of that new. It'll be right in that spot.
Okay.
I did have one question on page one oh five, section one point seven. There's two addendums, one dated seven twenty-three, twenty-five, and one seven twenty-four. What are those?
I'd do better to speak to those.
Addendum one, trying to remember. Cleaned up some verbiage in the specifications, and addendum two had to do with the civil page, including up a, the water service line, making sure it's the correct size.
So, no, no substantial change in?
No.
Just cleanup. Okay, they're good.
And making that was part of the bid specs?
Yeah, it was the bid specs that changed, and addendum one, and then addendum two was we replaced one of the civil sheets, because we caught that, we had an inch and a half line called out, we needed a two-inch length.
Very good, thanks.
And it looks like they're already doing work on the sewer lines, just over there.
Yeah.
So, this will start as soon as that's completed, I guess?
It's a projected November start date.
November.
Yeah, they just broke across Forty Second today, will be, so.
Yeah, they have a pipe across and back on it, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Solomon, and second by Stricker. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Stricker.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Eleven, reports from staff orders and permissions. A, council to discuss and consider action on a non-exclusive license and management agreement for use of the municipal property for an adult pride football league, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
So, this agreement is with Jeremiah Stobel, which helped with the league last year. He helped Kirk out with the league. Just given timing and the amount of projects and stuff we have going on, we'd like to license this one out this year, and then try to bring that back in-house next year. So, this is a good agreement for us to still gain some revenue back without having all the maintenance and management of the league.
And so, this is up on the soccer field area?
No, this will be at Lacy.
At Lacy Park, okay.
Yeah, we do it in the outfield of a couple of fields there.
So, second year back?
Second year back, yeah. So, it had previously been in Mitchell for a little while, and another couple of fields, so it's good to have it back in Scottsbluff. People really enjoy it.
How was the experience the first year?
Pretty good. I think they had a good response. There's always some issues with adult pride leagues for some reason. It's very competitive, so it's good to have Kirk's backing with Jeremiah's first year doing it. And he'll be out there with him too.
Nothing else changed in the contract?
No, nothing on the agreement changed. They'll be there for three months and the same amount.
All right, so we have a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Tell us.
Go ahead, sir. Doesn't matter, whoever you call.
Second by Stricker. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Phillips.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
All right, be counsel to review and discuss sections of municipal code relating to dangerous dogs.
Your Honor, as directed, I reviewed the police department's policies and procedures. I reviewed our code of ordinances, and I reviewed the state statutes. Is regarding the policies and procedures, we have good policies and procedures and guidance for the officers to accomplish these type of investigations. You know, if, all of those officers over there at the police department are very capable of conducting these investigations, and I think they're probably better suited because of their investigative skills, experience, and training to do these type of investigations. Just briefly, the role of the animal control officer is to have great expertise in these type of things, but it's really to relieve the burden for the officers, so that they don't have to do these during the day. So, the hours for animal control officers, seven thirty, four o'clock. This event happened after six o'clock, so the animal control officer would be on, on the day. Officers are very capable, and they have great knowledge, and how to investigate these type of events. So, I turned to our code of ordinance, ordinances, and I think they're at the professional standards. You read the state statutes, and you guys have a copy of those, they basically read the state statutes. So, we know Chief Brass checked with other communities to see what their procedures are, to see if they're different than ours, and we really think ours are, are at the professional standard. One thing that we did do because of this event was, we started to take pictures of the dogs. So, we'll add that to our case file, so the officers will be able to pull a picture of the dog out. That's the one improvement we did make because of this. I do believe our policies, procedures, code of ordinances are all at the professional standards.
And I saw here, the first offense is a five hundred dollar fine?
If you violate, yes. That's, that's not, that's if you violate the dangerous dog ordinance.
So, in a typical year, how many dogs do we deal with that would fit this category?
We have a list of dangerous and potentially dangerous. We have four on the list right now for twenty-five. We have eighteen on the list for twenty-four. And it just kind of up and down through the years. I did look at the list, and we keep, we keep very good records. Went clear back, I went twenty years back, clear back to twenty twenty, two thousand five, and everything looks good, to keep in track, so.
Just give a sense of what you found in terms of number of dogs that have been deemed dangerous and, or, yeah, dangerous?
Yeah, it goes up and down over the years. It's anywhere from, the highest year I see was twenty-two, and those are both potentially and dangerous. And then I, there was a year where it was a single-digit number, like six, something like that, so. Kind of ebbs and flows, but our process is really good. You know, as soon as the officer submits his report, it goes over to the city prosecutor, and they make the determination of what the dog's gonna be deemed, whether potentially or dangerous, however it fits. You know, if there is a dog bite, I talked to Ken about this earlier today, the city attorney will kind of weigh the circumstances of each case. High percentage of the dog bites are deemed potentially dangerous, but not all. And then it, they, if they are potentially dangerous, and they do it again, they're dangerous. And then, that comes with quite a responsibility. You have to make sure the dog's always secured when unintended, either inside or outside. You have to have a cover of the pen, and sides of the pen have to be embedded into the ground. You have to warn the public with signs. You know, the kennel has to be childproof. If you go off the property, the dog has to be muzzled, and has to be on a three-foot chain, or chained no longer to three foot, and there's quite the responsibility once your dog is deemed dangerous.
So, I glanced through there, is there a requirement on fencing? If you have a dangerous dog, is there a requirement with fencing?
It has to be inside. Yeah, if it's unintended, it has to be in a kennel type with the roof. You can, I didn't see anything that prohibited you being out in the yard, in a fenced yard with your dog. But unintended, it's gotta be.
I think it even said that, you know, just put the post in, and then fence along the surface, you gotta, so they don't dig through.
So, I think we're, we're at the professional standards.
So, just out of curiosity, the definition of a dangerous dog has dogs that are meant for fighting, trained for fighting, which they really don't have anything to do with the dogs. I mean, they- I mean, they, they don't, I'm sure they don't say, hey, train me to fight. So what, and then, so if it's deemed dangerous and it's, and then later in there, I see in the ordinance, it's a prohibited act, strictly prohibited. So if you find somebody that's training a dog, then how do you handle that dog because it's trained for fighting?
Are you talking about a dog that's been deemed or?
Or that's, that you've, in your investigation, found that is, is or has been or is being trained to fight?
I think that, Jerry, the spirit of that language is to address dog fighting. If a dog was trained to fight another dog, it would be a pretty unusual circumstance. But if a potentially dangerous dog is found in violation, we confiscate it. So yeah, I don't think we confiscate that. If we confiscate it, does the main society? I don't know that we've ever taken a dog that was trained.
Just say it's a trained dog, we innocent bystander.
You would take it considerable.
Yes, yeah.
Our office would do it, and we'd probably go to the county attorney by Frank. State statute.
Any other questions or comments from anyone?
State attorney, Amy Bartellini, 26th Street, Garrett. Director of the community oversight, Pat Rass, and so you guys were going to be talking about this tonight. And asked us if we might have any recommendations for changes or additions in the ordinance. So we kind of looked over this Scottsbluff city ordinance to the Nebraska statutes. And so some of the things that we looked at was possibly recommending microchiping when a dog is potentially dangerous instead of waiting to become dangerous. Requiring ratings vaccination when they're deemed potentially dangerous. Rubbing language that implies the owner can have a microchip. It has to be done by a veteran or a NHS, the main society. And the microchip has to be registered by the owner. Also, from the Nebraska statute, a dangerous dog is, if they're such, shabby skater, mule, that actually prevents these animals from passing the road straight onto their officers and creating more animals.
Did you say, do that, recommend that, potentially dangerous or dangerous?
I believe you can do it by your age realistically. And then the last one is about permanent relocation, which says that once a dog is deemed dangerous, it cannot be relocated unless it's with basically written permission from the city. Where to relocate it from and where to relocate it to. And I can provide this to you right away. Some other?
So at current time, our policy, do we have anything out of the ratings portion of things? In our current policy, do we have any requirement for ratings vaccination? That is, all dogs.
I think the ratings portion is only under dangerous.
Well, it's, it's only statute.
Well, yeah, it is.
It would be a separate.
Just to have one, I think.
Oh, you have to. You have to. Thank you.
So I think one of those recommendations that we, we talked about, and I think you, that's why you do the pictures and do the microchipping for the, for the potentially dangerous.
Moving on to number 12. Council reports, informational only. This item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members that meetings attended since the last city council meeting. Any updates?
Sue? Jerry and I went to the opening of the pickleball court. Yeah, we need to get a break. So, yeah, and we went to pickball court when it opened on Saturday and it was full. They had a food truck and everyone's eating, we had fun.
Yeah, a lot's people.
The court is really well designed. There's, there's definitely more parking next to the pool, which definitely helps. So I think it's really, and the lighting seemed really good too.
I guess I did forget, I was, just went and hung out at the farmer's market to see if anybody would come come to me. And the whopping three people did. But two of those people had mentioned, and I'd heard this from other places, where the smells come from, especially when there's bees, when they wonder if it's the lube or the sugar factory. I'm guessing it's both, maybe a combination with some wet feed, feedlots and things. I don't know that there's anything we can do. My father-in-law worked at, he was a manager, what in Minnesota, and they always had the.
National night out tomorrow evening, 5. 6. 6 to 8. Sweet.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Stricker, second by Phillips. Call the roll.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.